"My mother always said start on time so we can get out early, so that's the plan." "So first of all, I'd like to be the official welcome hour." "I hope the audience knows most everybody, but this is the first of probably many public information nights over the next year and a half probably that will have as updates to the town municipal building construction project." "So as I said, this is the first one." "So one, thank you for coming because certainly helping us get the information out is to everyone's advantage." "We have some handouts and I think everybody picked them up." "The handouts are a pretty hefty group of papers." "I'm just not going to read them to you obviously, but the first one is sort of an agenda for tonight." "There's one in there about the mission and vision statement of this group and we'll talk about that a little bit in the future." "There's a slide presentation, PowerPoint presentation to be done this evening and a place for you to write questions in your notes." "As we go along, if you want to jot things down, there's a sort of cheat sheet to help you do that." "In addition to that, there's a frequently asked question sheet, rather extensive of questions that may have been in your mind or may have popped up or have been presented to us along the way." "And then there's a multiple sheet of papers explaining the background of the building committee and we're certainly not going to read all of that to you, but there's definitely a reason why we wanted to share that with you." "So I think if I've done it right and somebody, there's a group of people that can feel free to jump in if I did something wrong, I think that makes up the packet of material that we passed out." "The reason we passed out the bios of the backgrounds of the building committee members is because this group was formed in a relatively unusual way." "The selectmen of this town decided that they would like to have some citizens support and advice and feedback and somebody to bounce things off of them as a group to work with them throughout the project." "As you know, asking for volunteers in a town is not very successful as a rule." "In this case, I won't speak for the selectmen, but I think I heard them say that they were surprised at the number of people who came forward to provide some services to them and to be part of this building committee team." "So you will see, and we have listed a fair amount of people that have been working on this project." "It came to pass that the selectmen felt that it wasn't a pick and choose situation for them, that they basically would accept all of us who showed some interest and that's how this group was formed, all 14 of us." "So I'd like to quickly introduce who they are, as I said, you have their bios. But we'll start with the five selectmen. We have Dan Dubois, the chair, and I think everybody knows Dan. Tom Danley, okay, who's been a selectman. Phil Labby, if they'll ever raise their hand, stand up or take a bow or do something. Belga Jones." "And that's the core selectmen and then the citizens on the committee." "Oh, Jason."
"Unbelievable."
"I do that all the time." "You know, it's a mental block."
"Raising your hand."
"Sorry, Jason."
"He does it on purpose, Jason."
"Everybody told me to, Jason, just tell me that." "And the citizens on the committee, Ethan Davis. And the vice chair of the committee, Robert Ingerson, who as you can see from his bio brings lots of talent. Jack Reese, who many of us know from many committees in town. Joe Samard, who has been a great contributor. John Bell, over there behind the computer and I can't say enough about John's technology help that he's provided us. Richard Fitzmaurice, where's Rich, Rich Albat. Stephen DeZell, who you'll see later a little bit about what Stephen can provide. And I'm Jack Turkott. Some of you may know me, some of you may never want to know me, that's how Jason feels both sides." "I was an interim town manager, private Keith, and worked with this select group, so I'm very fortunate that they've allowed me to be part of this committee." "I just have to tell one quick story because I've been known to be a storyteller. I'll make it quick, but I think you should understand why I'm the chairman of the committee." "When I was a child, this is a religious story, so I don't want to need to offend anybody, but when I was a child, my behavior was not very good and everybody that in my family will attest to that." "So what I have found out, that if you have poor behavior as a child, when you grow up, God makes you chairman of committees." "So this is exactly why I was selected to be a chairman." "We also have on our group the town manager and Keith Treffeton has been a major part of putting this all together and as anybody knows about a town manager's assignment, everybody's job is a town manager's job." "In addition to that, we have picked up two strangers who are no longer strangers. We have two people that we ended up employing to be the architectural experts for this project. Lita, and she said, I can butcher this and I probably will, Semerow and David Woodard. And Lita is a principal at the architectural firm of Port City out of Portland and David is a site design landscape architect working for a company called VHB out of South Portland, an engineering firm." "So those two people have been matched up with this committee, they are now part of this team and we are very, very fortunate to have them." "The role of the committee is interesting because the selectmen have been very supportive and gracious to the fact that we as a group will work as a group. And you will see a little bit later our vision, a vision and mission statement. But I want to read them, they're short, but I think it sets a tone and it has certainly set the tone for us. Our mission statement is very simple. Our mission is to provide input and to assist to the selectmen in the design, construction and completion of the new town office building. This committee will participate in the process from the early stages of design to the opening of the facility." "So that's basically what we decided was our job and it was our function. Our vision, a little more outreach, is our vision is that the new town office will meet the current and future needs of the municipal staff and the Arundel community by providing a functional, practical, efficient and economical facility which the citizens of Arundel will be proud to call their new town office." "As you can see, we kept it very simple and as you can see, that's a good guiding principle for us as we move forward." "Our meeting schedule is Tuesday nights, we have been generally meeting every two weeks. I just want to emphasize this because I don't think we even realized it till the other night. We started April 10th, 2018. So we're about 11 months into this process. We've had approximately 100-plus meetings. In addition to that, we had a group of people go out and do site visitations of other towns and other communities and other municipal facilities. We also spent three very difficult nights interviewing architectural firms. And as I already indicated to you, that we decided on Port City." "We also spent a reasonable amount of time, a number of groups, talking to staff. Talking to staff in the facility that we now have, past and present staff as well, trying to determine specifically what the needs of the staff would be from a point of view of space, efficiency and a touch on future, but mostly trying to design a space that would meet the needs of the staff that we have." "Regarding questions tonight, I have a request and the request would be, if you have questions, if you'd hold them to the end or if you have comments, hold them to the end. And I have a reason for that because each person at this table has planned to present information to you, all different. We all kind of took a subject and we said, okay, Dan will do this and David will do this and Steve will do that. So we have a minus script, but if you wait, your questions may very well be answered by a presenter. At the end, if you have a question and it's a question about perhaps something Steve presented, we're going to be informal, I mean, I'm probably sounding more formal than I should, but if you have a question, it's something Steve, that Steve can answer or you have a comment about something Steve said, go ahead and ask Steve directly or anyone else who presented. If you have a general question, address it to me if you would and what I'll do is I'll try to search the group here and see if I can identify a person that can best answer your question. But we do have a fair amount of information to present tonight, so hopefully a lot of your questions will be answered." "So with that, unless I forgot something, did I mention that Jason Dano was part of the, oh, I did already." "I just want to make sure I didn't skip over Jason." "I will introduce at this point our first presenter or our first person that's prepared to provide you some information and somewhere in this paper, I have that list of who's who first, but I believe we're going to start with Keith."
"Yes, thanks, Jack. My name's Keith Treffeton, I'm the town manager here in Arundel and I really appreciate you folks coming tonight to listen to some of the information that we're able to provide to you tonight. If you remember, the first picture that you saw, obviously is our existing town facility. Built in 1900 and returned or turned over as a municipal building in 1974. So it's been 45 years that the municipality has utilized that spot for its functions. The facility is located on one lot which we share with the Arundel fire department. The building is situated in such a way that expansions to either side of the building, the side setback and rear setback would be a challenge. Coming to the front of the building would also be a challenge in that presently we only have, we have 34 spaces of parking, which is highly inadequate at this particular point. We have about 14 to 15 employees and staff that are there coming and going during the day. So if there's a large function, say voting or something like that, it becomes a real problem." "As I said, we share it with the fire station. What we also share with them is the well. So right now, the well's located on the westerly side of the parking lot. It goes to the fire station and then comes back to the town hall for our use. Unfortunately, the water is not drinkable, so we have a bubbler and those types of things in the facility to take care of that." "Talk a little bit about the spaces. Presently, as I said, 34 parking spaces. The new facility as designed would have 66 spaces, which also would take into consideration, and we'll hear that later on tonight, the meeting space that's being proposed at this location as well. So it would give us a better flow of traffic. Obviously, if you've been there during the voting, you know that staff has got a lot of challenges during voting time. The votes, voting is held at the fire station, so that means logistically, all the apparatus have to come out of the building in the morning. The booths get set up and then throughout the day from 8 o'clock to 8 at night, it's used for voting. Our issues and challenges, obviously, are during the evening times, when it gets dark out, folks are parking on the sides of the road, either on Limerick Road or Mount Road and it becomes a real problem for folks to come and go out of our facility and be safe doing that." "Can we go over a couple of the other..." "The first photograph you see here is our upstairs part of the building that we presently are in. Again, we have about 2,400 square feet in this building that we're utilizing, both for storage and for utilization. Here, you'll notice that we're in the code enforcement officer's room. The code enforcement officer sits way over here on the far right side. If there are any meeting space, meetings that are going on upstairs, they're in his office around this table. Any, if the assessor has to talk to anybody in particular, they are stretched out in this particular room. So very inefficient in terms of the code enforcement officer having the ability to have some privacy to deal with clients and that type of thing." "Where I'm standing, you can see there's a hallway that comes all the way down. Now, the stairway to go downstairs is way down here, but this hallway is important because right to my right is the assessor's office. So you have to actually literally come into the code enforcement office in order to go into the assessor's to conduct any business with her." "The other thing that you see in this photograph is that everything is stored in this particular room. All our file cabinets, any type of storage or record keeping that we have going on upstairs is in this facility. So there's no separation of that equipment from another. You can't see it here, but in the far right corner is the AC unit that gets put into the door, into the window just simply to try to cool the facility particularly upstairs." "This is a series of three photographs and I'll just explain them a little bit to you. The first photograph to the left here is our deputy treasurer's office. There's no door on our office, so if you walk into our main hall and then open the door to come in, her office is immediately to the left with no door. So if she's carrying on sensitive HR discussions with folks, she either has to literally go upstairs and find a space or we try to put something, a curtain or something here to give some privacy. Her office, you can see that it's pretty well dated, the carpets. That's a pretty good example, the carpets beginning to separate off the floor. We've got a lot of places where we had trip hazards where the tape is really holding the carpets down at this point. And you'll also see in this particular photograph that she has an electric heater in her office. Till I got here probably a few years ago, I'd say three years ago, you could sit at any one of these office windows or near these offices and if you didn't have your jacket on, you would be cold because the wind that would come through the windows was pretty substantial. So we changed the window packages out, but still, there is, if you put your hand next to those windows, there's a lot of draft that's coming through, so it's very inefficient in terms of retaining heat in the building. The middle photograph is the, believe it or not, is the employee's bathroom. If you come into the main office and you go all the way around, it's like a horseshoe shape, you would come into the employee's bathroom. What's interesting about this, not only does it not meet ADH standards, obviously, we're using it for our IT, that's our server and it's located in the bathroom and it's really the only place that we can keep it right now." "The photograph to the far right is our safe, it's where a vault area. Presently, it's being used for a catch-all for almost every type of document that may be downstairs that needs to be secured. What's interesting about this is that you have the dehumidifier sitting on the floor here and that dehumidifier, if it wasn't there, we'd have a real issue with some of our important records that need to be retained for us. If you went in there and you turned back around and looked behind you, you would see that the only heat source there is an electric heating van that sits up on top of the ceiling forcing whatever hot air needs to be in that location." "So with the photographs that you've seen, you can obviously tell that there are some challenges that we're up against right now in terms of adequately providing appropriate space for our staff, having proper storage for our important documents, to make sure they're secured and well taken care of, having a good flow of traffic for our staff to come in and out and providing an opportunity for our staff to have privacy when meeting with the residents, which can be very important. So those are the things that in a nutshell, we see right now with the existing building."
"Keith, thank you. Again, moving along so that we get basically through our agenda for tonight. The selection of the site, and Dan will talk to you about all of the challenges the selectmen had, but the selection of the site became an opportunity to form a partnership and Dan, who's chairman, current chairman of Dubois, current chairman of the selectmen and Tom Tucker will help, the two of them will explain a little bit about the site."
"Good evening. So you know, Keith talked about the deficiencies in the building and those just didn't happen, right? Those deficiencies have been there for quite some time and because of those deficiencies, it's been an item of discussion for a new town hall for many, many years. It pretty much started in earnest discussion with the board back when Todd Shea was our manager. We had Todd look at some properties. At the time, we had town-owned properties and you know, we had a bunch of options that we had to look at, right? So we looked at this town-owned properties, what's the best fit? You know, is the property big enough for a town hall, is it big enough for future growth? And when I say future growth, I don't mean we're going to build a building and then we're going to expand a building. I'm looking at future growth on, is there an opportunity for a ball field? Is there an opportunity for a soccer field? Is there an opportunity maybe to put, you know, a park for the citizens or a spot for a Christmas tree lighting or anything of that nature? And these properties really did not afford, were able to afford that. The other thing with those properties, there was a lot of costs associated with road, putting in a longer road, a very long road, having to work with ledge and again, the future growth. We had individual owned properties that folks came to us and said, hey, I got a piece of property, you know, let's see if we can work it out. Those were nice, but again, those same deficiencies on those properties hit us. Wetland, wetland issues, future growth issues, you know, site's not big enough, strings attached. You know, we had landowners that said, I got a nice piece of property for you, but why don't you build me a road and then I'll let you have this little piece over here and you know, all these different strings attached and it just, it just didn't fit well, right? So you know, when Keith came on board, we kind of really pushed this issue again and we started really pushing hard and... He's missing the Limerick Road property here, but there's a Limerick Road property that we had, we kind of talked about. This Limerick Road property was a pretty big piece of property, 45 plus acres and you know, the town sat back and looked at that and said, Keith, you know, we're not in the business of wanting land, that's a lot of property and the landowner wanted a lot of money. We kind of went back and forth with the, went back and forth with the landowner, tried to break off a piece of this, just kind of really didn't work out. It sat for a little while and then a group of individuals got together and they went to the Kennebunk Port Land Trust and said, hey, we have an idea. They kind of worked this, the Kennebunk Port Land Trust said, yeah, we like this. They formed the Arundel Conservation Trust, the Arundel Conservation Trust came to us and said, we've got a proposal for you. What if we kind of get this partnership going here and we work at buying this one piece of property? We'll take a piece of it and then you can have the other half. We kind of worked those issues out, went to town vote, everybody voted on buying this. We bought the whole piece and then the Conservation Trust bought a part of it and we ended up with the 10 acres. And the reason for that really, right, we bought that for the sole purpose of putting a municipal building. And that property affords us a lot of nice things. It affords us a nice piece of property, plenty of room to expand, off-street parking, plenty of off-street parking, being able to hook up to the Eastern Trail at some point in time. So there's a lot of pluses for that property. Having a town meeting that everybody can fit in, having a tree lighting that doesn't, you know, put a bunch of vehicles on the road, same thing with a town meeting. There's a lot of opportunities for this piece of property and that's why we feel that that's the best one." "So for those of you that don't know, this is the Limerick Road, the blueberry farm, the llama farm here. This is Mark Welch's pit. This is the whole piece of property right here, this is the 45, 47 or so acres. This is the 10 acres that the town has decided, that the town has purchased to be able to build the town municipal building." "With that, I will turn it over to Steve DeZell."
"Good evening, everybody." "I'm actually quite a long time resident of Arundel as it turns out. It doesn't sound like that, but I've been here 18 years, it's longer than most people on the committee as you can tell there. I want to just talk you through a little bit of how we went about getting from a piece of land to a proposal for a building. We went through a variety of steps and there've been a lot of iterations, which I won't go through. But the first thing we did was set ourselves some targets. I think John lines up the next slide, I don't know if we all see." "That knocks on..."
"Okay, well, that's our one."
"The things we decided we should..."
"Come up to him, Steve."
"Yes, address as far as possible, we should be as future-proof as possible. That is, we try and design a building that certainly for the foreseeable future would not require to be expanded, would not require updating, would be, this would be a one-shot deal. It would not come back to the town of, we made a mistake, it's too small, we need more money. We wanted to avoid that." We wanted to avoid that. The building should also reflect the rural nature of the town. That we felt was important. These are not in any particular order. And it shouldn't look like a factory or a typically constructed elementary school. The town would probably prefer it didn't. The building should project a positive image of the town. Capital operating costs should be as small as possible, both of those. There's some issues with that. The building should be positioned to allow for further development of the site in the future, particularly recreational facilities and things of that nature which the town doesn't have, that present, which 10 acres gives us opportunities to make. And the building and its landscaping should fully reflect the agreement with the Conservation Trust so that it will provide some bathrooms, access to their land, thus helping to the Eastern Trail in the future, et cetera. So that's all, and parking available, that's all. So those were the guiding principles that we set ourselves. And then, the first thing we did was set out a very detailed questionnaire to the current municipal staff, excluding Keith. Don't watch your word, Steve. Keep looking at it. And...
Not like Jason.
We got very good feedback. The objective for this was really twofold. First of all, to discover how they work, who they have to work with, what particular aspects they needed so that you could set up a functional building. But also to get some idea from them what they foresee as additional staffing needs given the likely growth of the town. Now, we can't go out 50 years because nobody knows. But we went out a little way anyway to try and get some feel for that. We got very good feedback from the staff and talked to people individually, et cetera. That was very useful. And armed with all that information, we came up with a first shot at what the building might look like. This was one of multiple iterations. It started off, it looked like a farmhouse with a barn attached due to lunar road. It still does. But it was a bit over 10,000 square feet in the first iteration. And that first shot was intended for people to throw darts at it. And the photographs they did. There was a lot of discussion about that first shot. And what's happened since, is we looked at a variety of options. We looked at, would a two-story building make better sense? It's a smaller foundation, smaller roof. It turns out not to make much sense, partly because of ADA requirements. You have to have elevators and all sorts of other things. It gets very difficult to do a sense of it. And it also disrupts the workflow. People can't talk to each other, so it's a cross-small staffing issue. So we abandoned a two-story building. We went to a... This variation actually had additional space available over the meeting room to try and future-proof things. That was just expensive, really. And we gradually shrunk it. And finished up at the end. We got down to about 8,200 square feet. Quite a big reduction. And that's the building. People have seen the newsletter, it was on the front of the newsletter. That one, basically. There's a slight... That's more or less where we finished up. And that was a bit over 8,000 square feet. At which point, we decided we had probably got as far as we could without a real architect involved. Because although we'd done our best to make sure we had the ADA stuff covered and that we've got the other code issues covered, we knew that we were not the experts at this. And passed it on at that point to Port City, who had done a remarkable job of shrinking the thing. Still considerably further, actually, and simplified, both of which are the real steps in the right direction. And I'll leave it to Lita to talk about that. That's where we finished up. The... There are a couple of other issues with this. One of the things that we've been very keen on from the beginning is to try and keep the energy signature of the building as small as possible. The sort of go-to phrase with this, to make it as near net zero as we can. That is, so that we use the absolute minimum amount of energy. Keeps the running cost down, obviously, and it's good for a lot of other things. The target has been, regardless that the operating costs of the new building should not exceed the operating costs of the current building and preferably should be considerably less. Whether we will get it to actually zero operating, energy operating costs depends on budget design extent, whether we can afford the big photovoltaic solar panel system that it would take. It actually will hope with enough panels now to run both itself and the fire station. And actually, I think, given the modern panel development, it might even run enough to run the public works department as well in terms of electricity, which would be pretty good if we could get there. Of course, there's a cost involved, but it might well be one of them. At the very least, it will be an extremely tight building, that is, no drafts, no air penetration, very well insulated, and will pass very little to run. We may look at a geothermal system for heating and cooling. They're attractive in a lot of ways, but they are pretty expensive up front. And it depends what we're sitting on, which we actually don't know. Nobody's drilled in to find out if that's a plausible option or not. But that's the sort of thing we're looking at. And we think we can get to a really pretty, low-cost operating building. And the small size, and it really is quite small. Obviously helps with capital costs, so that's straight size related. But it is designed, and maybe we'll do this, to be as future-proof and cover what we need certainly for as far as we, to a mere at least. We should tell people it's melted that long, but somebody puts a lot more. And I think that's really why I should stop.
Okay. I'm just going to add a comment because I can't help it. Steve talked about we needed a real architect, you know, at some point. And just go back in that handout and read Steve's bio, his history. And I think you'll find that we have a real architect on this committee who produced draft after draft after draft for us throughout this long process. Without him, I'm not sure if we would ever reach the level that we reached. There's lots of talent on the group, but Steve's ability to draw what we were saying was a huge help. So he's humble and he is, but he needs a lot of credit for the work that he did. And with that, well, we did need a real architect because this is a municipal building. But what we needed was licensed architect, an architect with municipal experience, an architect that does this every day now for a living. And the code work and the municipal component changes this dramatically from a house down the street to a municipal building. It's a whole different playing field. So we interviewed architects and I'd like to introduce to you Lita, who has joined our team and has handled us pretty well because we're not an easy group.
You're easy, trust me. I've had some doozies in my days. What I wanted to talk about briefly before we go, we'll talk a little bit, is the size of the building. So as Steve talked about, they did a, let me see, survey. And this is kind of, it's hard to see. This first part is the original. And they went in and they kind of looked and made a determination of what spaces are needed. There's a meeting space, there's office space for the various people. They're listed, but I don't want to bore you by going through each one. As well as, we incorporated a couple of offices in there for future. They're a little bit flexible. As well as meeting space. Because right now, in the existing office, there's not meeting space. And the whole idea is to be able to provide some flex space so people can go and have private conversations, have meetings. And that's just not possible. So this is the original, this is basically roughly what I took off of what Steve and this, Steve's plan. What I did is I overlaid it with standard sizes for offices. I overlaid it with what was required by code. The bathroom code's really fun and made. It's very specific about what is required. And they all do need to be accessible. And so we overlaid that and we looked at a square footage. And I'm going to read it down here. We are total, this is with the vault, the meeting room, and some storage that's upstairs that we're, that, you'll see the stairs, but it's just some upstairs dry storage, not every day, but can be accessible for various long-term items that might be needed. As well as increasing the social space, the social worker space because right now, they have just a tiny office, they have no storage, they have no way to serve clients at the office. So that was another big thing that we were adding to actually, we're in that, and we can talk about that a little bit later. So what we've got is we've got a square footage. And we're going to use, that's what we're using right now to bring, to kind of get a hold of the cost. The next step, because I know everybody's going to go, "Whoa, what's it going to cost?" I'll tell you, we're not quite there yet. We wanted to have this meet before we're there. The next step to fully be able to understand the cost of this building is to do a section and talk about the materials. Once we will have that, then we will go out and we will get some pricing. And that will come up in the next meeting. I think, I'm going to turn this over.
Okay, what I'd like to very briefly address is our estimated cost of the building, which includes the construction cost and the financing cost. And then try to give you some idea of how this might impact property taxes. Now, as Lita said, we're not quite there yet in completing the design. But without a completed design, it's very difficult to put a specific estimate on what the building will cost. Our committee has put together an estimate of between $2 million and $2.5 million. And I would emphasize, as has been said before, that the committee does have some pretty qualified people on it in the way of architects, building designers, building contractors. So we think this is a pretty good ballpark figure, but we can't give you an exact figure at this point in time. Because of the uncertainty, we've been looking at a range of estimates that run between $2 million and $2.5 million. That first figure is an error, there should be two more zeros on it. Regarding the financing cost, we've been on the website of the Main Bond Bank. And our bonding options include the type of payback, be it a level payment or a level principal type of payment, the payback period, which can go up to 30 years. We've been looking at between 20 and 30 years. And the date of issuance, which would be either spring or fall. Now, if the voters approve this project and if we stay on schedule, we're shooting for a fall of this year as a date of getting the bond issued. Now, the Main Bond Bank does provide us with estimates of an interest rate, annual debt service, total payback, and the total interest on the bond. They do emphasize that these are estimates and estimates only. And they could change before the bond is issued. Now, the bond bank repayment schedule would call for our first payment to be due in May of 2020, next year. This is an interest-only payment, so it doesn't amount to a heck of a lot of money. The only reason I mention this is because it looks like the increase in taxes which would be due to pay this bond will come in two bumps. There'll be a very small bump in taxes next year. And then the year after that is our first year of a full payback amount, which will include interest and principal payments. So assuming the voters do approve the project, you will see taxes go up a little bit next year and go up by a more substantial amount the following year. Now, this chart shows samples of some of the different payback options that we looked at. For instance, the first line shows a level debt payment over 30 years. It shows you what the bond payment would be in the first year, what the bond payment would be in the second year, what the total payback amount is. And then from these figures, we calculated what the effect on the mill rate would be for the first year and the first full year. So for that first example, the 30-year period, the impact on the mill rate would be 10 cents in the first year and a total of 30 cents for the first full year. So that would be a 30-cent increase over a two-year period. We really do have to pay attention to this type of chart because although that first line shows a 30-cent increase, you will notice that the total payback is also a heck of a lot more money than the item down on the bottom, which is a level principal payment over 20 years. In fact, it's close to $1 million. So you've really got to be careful about which one of these options we pick. And it's not something that we've really looked at yet because this is the sort of thing that we'll take another look at when we narrow down the real price of the building. Right now, we've got kind of a wide range and it's a bit tough to deal with. But we will be looking at this type of thing once we've got a good handle on a building estimate. Level debt payments, which include the first three options here, will decrease slightly after fiscal year 2021. Level principal payments will decrease, will also decrease after fiscal year 2021. But the level principal payments will decrease at a lot faster rate than the level payments will. There really isn't time tonight to go into expanding these out over a 20-year period. But the difference between them is really reflected in the total payback amount, which over the course of these options varies between a little over $4 million and a little over $3 million, payback of principal and interest. The last slide I've got shows you how this would affect your local taxes. First column in this chart gives a series of property valuations. The second line shows what the increase in taxes would be the first year, where we have only an interest payment. The third column shows what the increase would be in the first full year of payback. And the total increase, which is a combination of the two, the total increase is spread over two years. So if we were to take a $200,000 house, your increase in taxes in the first year would be $16. Your increase in taxes for the second year would be $54. That would be in addition to the 16, for a grand total of a $70 tax increase, which if you boil that down to a cost per month, $5.83. which if you boil that down to a cost per month, $5.83 per month. Now, this example assumes a building costing 2.25 million, which is the mid-range of our 2 million to 2.5 million dollar spread. We've taken a mid-range option, and this is for a level payment option over 20 years. So it's not the cheap, it's not the cheapest way to go in terms of mill rate, but it's, it's a good compromise between what the mill rate would be and what the total payback would be. Again, this is a level principal payment. The payments after year 2021 would go down a little bit, but it's a relatively small amount, which is why they call it a level payment. It is pretty much a level payment. And with that, I will turn it over to...
David.
David.
To get back to the property, you've already seen this slide, but I just wanted to mention that this is where the existing town hall is, and about a mile south of Limerick Road gets you to the property. It's also about 1.2 miles from Route 1, which is, which is right there, so the intersection's there. It's right across from West Lane. The eastern trail runs right along there, and there's the Kennebunk River. Duck Brook is back here, so the, as is stated before, there's potential for the Rondo Conservation Trust to have access to the eastern trail, and the town's gonna retain the front 10 acres. I'm gonna kinda zoom in now, just on the 10 acres, which is, so this is, this is Limerick Road, and this is West Lane right there. The areas outlined in, in blue are wetlands, and they're shaded, so there's some wetlands on the property. The yellow lines, there's a couple orange lines, those are, we've done topographic surveying in there. Property slopes from about 82 feet along the road to 76 in the back. We've kinda focused right on the front, because obviously the town building doesn't need 10 acres at this time, so we, we're planning on having the building in the front. The zoning of the property is urban residential one, which allows a municipal building, so it's in compliance with the zoning. The building setback, so we got a, the zoning code has a 50-foot requirement along Limerick Road, and the rest of the property boundaries have 25 feet. As I stated, it's, it's fire, it's basically it's slopes to the front and back. Only six feet fall, but there's slightly a ridge, so you have some drainage that goes this way, and some drainage that goes that way. There's no public water or sewer available, so we'll need to have well and septic. There's a, a well that sits on the adjacent property, so this depicts a 300-foot setback that's required by the state to have separation from the septic system to a well. So the septic system for the town building would need to be in this general area. We wanna try to avoid impacting the wetlands as much as possible. Our goal's to keep it well below 4,000 square feet, which would require a different level of permitting, so we'll wanna make that easy. There's a stream here, and there's a 75-foot stream protection district, so we wanna kinda, we wanna keep development away from that area. And this is a statement, that Limerick Road's actually a town, and it's not a state, it's a, it's a town. Next slide. So we've taken a run at it, doing a preliminary plan based on the footprint that Lita came up with, that Steve started with. You know, whenever you do a site plan, you gotta look at the town's zoning ordinance to make sure you're complying with the lot size, which is a one-acre minimum, this is 10, so that, that checks that box. We have the building setbacks I talked about before, and there's also parking requirements, and there's landscape ordinance, and things like that. But right now, we're proposing to have the, the building located here. It's actually looking at 100 feet back instead of 50 feet, that line's the 50-foot. Possibly be 50 feet here instead of 25, so it's, it's setback nice. Talking with, Steve was talking about the rural character, it's, you know, we're trying to be respective with having a, you know, that farmhouse-type building setback, sort of like a lot of other homes are along Limerick Road. Proposed vehicle access is right across from... Proposed access across from West Lane. It is a town road, but DOT and the federal highway suggest our rural roads to try to combine access points to have less driveway conflicts, so it seems like a good idea to line that up there. And then the entrance has a nice sort of curve feel to it, it's, and the parking is concealed behind the building. As you're driving down Limerick Road, it's more like just a driveway, and a nice scaled building to look at. And this Keith was talking about, we have 66 spaces, that's part of the town's requirement. There's a, a meeting room that's gonna have room for about 125 people. So there's about 40 or so spaces that are required for that, and then the other 20 or so are to accommodate the, the office building. And then we've got sidewalks, and a potential for maybe a small outdoor plaza area outside the meeting room, which could be used for like, Dan was talking about, you know, maybe a tree lighting, or there's a gathering space for when there's voting day, or there's a break from a, a town meeting. You could have a nice gathering space out front there. And then the drainage, basically, is like I said, the ridge of the property runs here, so we're, we're planning on sheet flowing half the parking lot to a swale system, to a stormwater magic area, and then same here, with sheet flow to a swale to there. That, that helps keep costs down, we're working with the topography of the site, also not having to have catch basins and piping, so it's being handled with the sheet flow. We had one with this building, there's a small portion of a, of a wetland at the very end of that wetland that would be filled, but again, it's way below any thresholds to cause any permanent problems. And more importantly, another big item is the Rondo Trust shared use opportunity. Essentially, we're showing, could be a nice place for a trailhead to access the back 37 acres that the trust has, and gets you hopefully someday to the eastern trail. There's potential to have some access to some bathrooms here. Potentially, again, maybe some shared costs, maybe the, the trust could help. And maybe there's five or six spaces that, you know, they could pay for, essentially part of the construction cost. And then, it's also a good opportunity to, during the weekends, when the town hall's closed, this would actually, the trail would be being used on the weekend, we'll have eyes on the property. People are gonna be out there on the weekends, so it's gonna be a safe, secure place. The building will have activities 70s a week essentially. Is that as good?
Good.
Who's next?
Me. Makes it easy. So I'm gonna just walk you through a little bit of the building. And I'm not sure if anybody done this, we actually, the first thing we did is looking at the site. We actually neared the building and flipped it. Originally, it was laid out a little bit differently, we did that for a couple of reasons. This shape fit better on the site without affecting the wetlands by going this way. And then, we wanted to have the main entrance, we wanted to have a community, meeting space entrance here, and then we also wanted to have an entrance here for social services. So you'll see other doors. My folder's interfering, I'm sorry. That's okay. You'll see a cou- couple of other entrances. Those are not really main entrances so much as degress, they're required by code, but they, they're not for a lot of trap, foot traffic. So I'm gonna start with the meeting space. And as, as you see, we actually, you come in a foyer, and there's a bathroom on each side. The idea is on the weekends, this door will be locked, so people who are actually using the trail hiking will have access, and will have to work on the hours, to the bathrooms. So there won't be, I don't know, I'm a big hiker with my family, and I love you show up in the parking lot, and there's a porta potty. There's like usually a sign and a porta potty. And so this, this will give you an opportunity to actually have a real facilities. We have the meeting space, we are showing storage. We know that this storage will need to be broken up, but we're not quite there yet, so we're just showing it kind of as a large square, uh, storage space. If the project proceeds, then we will spend a little more time actually delineating what those storage spaces are, like voting booths, other things that do need to be stored off this. Tables and chairs actually take up a lot of room and often are forgotten in, in planning. This is a meeting, we have the ability for council space. We actually, we flipped that originally, that it was this way. We wanted to be able to put some windows there, but if you put windows up, you can't put a screen up. So we flipped it, so we have this side without any windows. But it's flexible, it's movable, and if, if it's appropriate, you can orient it any way you want. This is just for the diagram. This would be the main entrance to the building, we have the main services here, we have a service counter, we have the clerks, we have general office, we have some access, we have the deputy treasurers, the town manager. A break room, right now, we basically have a microwave and a teapot, electrical teapot, which is not a standard. This would be the social services o- office. This would actually be a room for social services, which would include a bathroom facility, as well as a place for meeting, as well as storage. Lots of times, people in need, whether it's a house burning down, domestic issue, just a wellness check, will, will need this services, and at this point, this town isn't able to offer them any discreet, easy way. This will offer that in a discreet, easy way. It has its own entrance, this door would be locked, so that it, it allows people dignity in a difficult time in their life. We have the vault, which is shared, here we just have, these are staff bathrooms. We have a meeting room. I'm blanking, I think that's 12, 12?
Yeah.
Yeah, 12, 10, actually 10, 10 meeting, uh, person meeting room. We have different files, and we counted, we actually went through and counted, there is some space for additional files. This is actually, these files in here were those ones you saw in the picture upstairs. So we're trying to organize them so they're actually not in somebody's room. This is the planning department, the code enforcer, the town planner. The assessor would be in here. This would be a counter. And the other thing, which I'm not sure if anybody, uh, anybody who hasn't constructed something, this has a great need for a lot of small meetings. Architects, builders, future, yeah, real estate wanna actually sit down and talk to the planner, talk to the assessor, talk to the code enforcer, and make sure what they're planning is correct. So we, what we tried to do is we tried to provide a, a small meeting room that can be used by multiple people versus trying to meet, meeting rooms in there. And if you'll notice, these are, these offices are a little bit larger, and the reason they're larger is part of the job in both of these is they're reviewing two-by-three plans. So they need their desk to be able to do their work, and they need a space, a layout space, because a large part of their day will be going through the plans. Some towns are going to straight electronic, it's not there yet. Portland is having, um, they ask for straight electronic, and it can take you up to two weeks to load your drawings up to their website. So there is still paper. I would say probably in 10 years, 15 years, that might go away, but for now, you're still there, and there will be a lot of light. Oh, and this is just, uh, storage. One other thing, if you notice, there's a stairwell. The idea of this is it would be trust overbuilt with some storage upstairs. We're just using basically the attic space that a lot of you probably would use down the middle. And if you'll look, we'll have a dormer so that we will actually have some natural light. Okay? John, to the next. For the 3D. And, oh, you mind? Yeah. This one's very visual, probably should've done this for David. What we tried to do is we tried to break this up like, like an old farmhouse, that we didn't want it massive. We wanted it to be in the, the feel of the vernacular. This is from the parking lot, this is the planning, this is the main, this is the meeting space. And the bathroom's right here, it's easy to find. Go ahead, John. This is the side. South side, this is where the driveway comes in. So there's a lot of buffer, but everybody that drives in will see this side. This is the side facing the main road, Limerick Road. And as you can tell, we've broken it up into several different sizes, like the old farmhouse. And then finally, the view. Do the neighbors, they'll be able to see this, we are trying to break it down. The idea was, would be that there would be a couple of trees in here to buffer it. I'm not sure if you're here tonight, the neighbors, but then you couldn't see the building. So it's a, it's a fine art of putting trees in to show the building without hiding. That's just a render. And I think... Back to you.
Well, that sort of concludes the presentation part of what we intended to provide you. I know that's a lot of information to digest, keeping in mind that we have lots of time as we continue through the project, and lots of opportunities for additional meetings. One of the meet, uh, goals that the selectmen indicated, I think in the first 10 minutes of, of our very first meeting back in April, was we, we wanted to work real hard at keeping people informed. Part of a problem of attempting a municipal adventure, whether it be a transportation or a municipal building, is that people often don't know what's going on. And they often get surprised, you know, at the end that, you know, something is about to happen. We did not want that to happen. You on the back table, you probably already got these in the mail, but we've already sent out two separate mailers. It's a newsletter called The Progress Report. It's dedicated totally to this project, and it, it was mailed to every resident of Rondo. And we will continue those progress reports. As a matter of fact, Progress Report Volume 3 is about to be mailed, and look, you should look forward to that in your mailing. As we have information meetings and send out information to you directly, hopefully, there won't be people that are surprised when this thing comes together at the very end. At this point, we'll kinda open this up to anybody who has any thoughts or questions. If you wanna direct it, if it's a finance question to John, and, or mention that we're very flung in that, that we have John, 'cause John has crunched a lot of numbers for us. Or if it's something about the trust, that Dan and Jack's here as well, feel free to, to ask us.
Please state your name, so that if we can get back to you and insert on the video for all the focus.
I'll open it up.
Who are you?
Simone Blassano. I'm kind of disappointed that you didn't put a picture of our antique furnace in there in the basement. It's probably as big as the two file cabinets together, I think. When it comes to the solar, is there any possibility of like, uh, some of the solar grants? Or is there some companies out there that have been working with municipalities and offering grants to upgrade their municipal buildings? And, um, especially with the new governor that's, you know, pushing a lot of, um, solar energy and everything. I'm just wondering if maybe that would help, um, as far as the cost or anything like that.
You gonna do that one?
Well, we, we have been approached by one of our local, um, folks that runs a solar company here in town. And has graciously offered half of the cost of putting solar into this facility. So, that will be part of our whole process as we begin to put this package together to figure out, um, how that solar package may be to our advantage. Very generous of him, something that we look forward to having further discussions with him. But I think Simone also hits the nail on the hood, on the head. As this project begins to unfold, whatever other grants or opportunities are up here for us to capture, we're certainly gonna be very aggressive in going after them, so we can keep the cost down.
And we'll, um, we'll look at efficiency. Main has different things at different times. And we always, um, we have a great working relationship. And sometimes the grants are appropriate, and sometimes they aren't. So, that's always something we look at, both electrical as well as general. But we really, until you really start the design of the building, it's hard to know what's available. 'Cause it, it does just keep, they keep updating it to what's relevant at the time.
Jack?
Uh, yes, uh, Jack Reeves. Along that line of one of the very last slides that was shown, you can see the images of solar panels on the two south-facing roofs. They were just put in there to show what it might look like if, if it's cost-effective to do that. And, of course, we'll be going through a lot of value engineering at the end here and try to keep our costs down. Say that, my budget committee had on it.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Joseph Fantel. I have a couple of questions may have been asked. I'll go through them, 'cause I made notes as I went along. Some of them may have already been answered, and I apologize if I'm asking again. What happens to the existing building?
I'm gonna let Dan answer that. I think every one of us can answer that, but, uh, but Dan, why don't you give that one up?
So, at this point, we don't really have, we don't know what we're gonna do with that building. It's, it's not, uh, the property is not so that we could sell it, because it's a non-conforming law. So, you know, the thought process is to be able to use it in some respect with the fire station. You know, maybe, you know, you, you, that building's gotta go, you know? To try to renovate that building, it'd just be too cost prohibitive. But, you know, the planners maybe use that for that, maybe just expand some parking. We're really not sure yet, but to piece that off and sell it, that's kind of out of the question, because it's, it becomes a non-conforming law, and there's really no question we could, we could do with that.
So, are you saying it'll have to be torn down, or you think it will be torn down?
Well, uh, my feeling is it'll, it'll probably have to be torn down. I mean, that building's in pretty rough shape. And part of the reasons that we're looking at a new town hall is the cost to try to rehabilitate that building, right? Try to renovate it. So, you know, we haven't looked at that yet, but we know that, um, there's a, there's a bunch of options that we have to really look at.
If you do tear it down, does it now become a non-buildable lot? So, you can't put another building up there?
So, right? Yes, yeah.
Yes, it's a non-conforming law.
Right, but that goes.
That goes. It doesn't have necessarily, we don't know what we're gonna do with the building yet, but you'll see if we put another one on.
Okay.
You could, you could expand onto the fire station when and if they need it.
So, like, to go out that way?
You could go out that way, because that would be, that perhaps may be an option in the future, but it might be. Correct, might be, might be.
You're on roll.
Okay. What, what, does, does anybody know what the future, uh, growth expectation is on Arondo? In terms of population? Is there, is there a, an overall plan for the growth of the town? Is there a limit to what the town wants to grow at?
I don't think there, I don't think there's a limit. We're, we're seeing probably about four percent growth, three to four percent. In terms of value, however, we're seeing seven to ten billion dollars a year in value. So, it's sort of fluctuating, but population's probably three to four.
Three to four percent.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a desire for the town in terms of what its overall, um, growth plan on the front, to, to maintain a certain growth level and not exceed that?
Well, I think that would be something more for the, uh, the select and the planning board, comprehensive plan committee, that kind of thing.
So, I mean, if, if the town does have a grant ordinance that allows, you know, X amount of, uh, building permits per year. And I think that the last, I don't know, three, four, five years, we haven't even met that amount. And the planning board has actually talked about trying to back that down, but they, they haven't. So, there really is no plan to, to limit or even promote growth. I mean, we have subdivisions throughout town, throughout the town that are waiting to be built. You know, they just took a couple of huge subdivisions that, at some point in time, that's just gonna take off. And, uh, you know, there's, it's gonna be, at some point, I think, some, some pretty big growth. How much you knows, and it's a crapshoot at this point, but...
So, the concept of a rural atmosphere, a rural town, it'll sort of go by the wayside.
Trying to keep it as rural as possible, but, you know, growth is inevitable, and, you know...
Yeah, but there's a, you know, you know, a little...
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, there's no plan for that, I guess, my question. How many people did, did, uh, later say the seat in the hall?
It's about a hundred and twenty.
About a hundred and twenty. Is it lacking the voting area as well?
Yes.
Any plans for the sheriff? Where's he going?
Right now, we, we had put an office space into our public safety building, which is our fire station. He has an office there.
Yeah, he has an office.
And he'll continue to stay there, yes.
The bathrooms that you talked about, the men and women bathrooms, are they family bathrooms? Uh, what is the nature of that?
We have one that is non-specific. We have a, this is public. We have a gang bathroom.
A what?
A gang bathroom, which is for female, one for female, one for male. Two toilets in the female, toilet and urinal in the female, or in the male, excuse me. And then, we have a, two staff bathrooms. So...
Yeah, you gotta check and include that, I guess.
Okay, we, we have...
All bath, you got two bathrooms on either side of the...
Well, on either side.
Yeah.
That is a, there's a female and a male.
Okay.
There's a toilet and a urinal in the male. Two toilets in the women, and then female. There is also a, just a single hole or non-specific bathroom that...
Third bathroom?
That, but that is not located in that front entrance. It's, it's in the, the town, the right one you enter the town office. So, that would be right there. And then, we have two bathrooms that are, uh, staff only. And then, we have the social worker, which does include a shower. That would be for emergencies if somebody is fire, whatever.
So, the non-specific bathroom is for family?
It's whoever wants to use. Yeah, they, they...
Or whether they want to do a dental, so...
Yes.
Whatever that may be.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's see. I do wanna say, uh, as a comment, I, um, I think the estimated cost is pretty good. I'm pretty impressed by the fact that it is what it is, and you've worked as hard as you have to hold it across town. A very nice building, by the way. I'm very impressed with it. I think it's very suitable for the town, um, at least from my, my perspective for what the town is. So, I'm happy to see that. This is the first time I saw it, so I'm happy to see it. And certainly do have a wonderful, qualified team that we work with, and, uh, that's very impressive. But I don't know what the rest of the town knows yet, but that's the first I learned of it. It's a credit to you that you have, and, uh, to, to working up and did a great job. So, that's my comment there. I think I have a couple of other questions, if you don't mind. So, the setback, it does, uh, from the road to the front of the building is twenty-five feet?
No.
No, the, the road requires fifty, and we're right now, we're at a hundred. You're at a hundred?
Yeah.
So, that'll be grass and sort of that, and skate down front. The driveway in is a two-way, yeah, driveway, so cars can pass on either side.
Yes, I have.
However, you will reserve the right to give back. All right, all right. I mean, you did well. You had ten, but you did well. Good question, thank you. Anybody else at this time? Yes, sir.
Jim Bouderrazzi, was in it for twenty-two years. You guys commented a bit on the conservation and having access through the conservation land to, um, the Eastern Trail. And I think that's gonna be a huge advantage. And, you know, people are gonna want to have access to that as soon as they can, when this building is up, you know, in a year or two. Is there, can someone talk to what the plan from the trust would be to have that access? Or are people, for some time, gonna have to go down and regrow to access the trail?
How about Jack? Can you stop that, can you say?
Thank you. I'm a member of the Conservation Trust. And, uh, I'd like to introduce this young lady here in front of me, Ania Shonrod, who's, uh, the vice president of the Conservation Trust. And also is very heavily involved in building trails. The point that I would make, Jim, is that, uh, in the beginning, when we were trying to put all this together, and what do we do with that back forty, if you will, thirty-seven plus? It really wouldn't have been possible without the help of Phil Levy, because he owned this strip of land, uh, between the back of that property and the tini bump river. It was about three hundred feet wide, maybe, there abouts four, one hundred. And it was through, really only through agreement with him, that we could then potentially get access to the Eastern Trail and to the river. And that was established before this even got off the ground verbally. And since then, it has been completely documented and negotiated and documented. And we have signed off approval from the Eastern Trail Organization to access the trail. And also, uh, approval from Urachel, you know, who's running under the... So, but that took a long time to get, but that's all done. And, uh, God, it's done, a wonderful job working with her. Ania, maybe you wanna say something about trail?
Yeah, we're just, we're gonna start building this spring. Hopefully, get, you know, through volunteers in the town and all the shameless work. There's a lot of people here who have, you know, who are already signing up for volunteering. So, if you're interested in helping us, um, we're gonna start this spring, you know, obviously, when, you know, that season is a little career control. And, uh, we're hoping to have one, um, trail open by fall. Do some sort of ribbon cutting, or, you know, just open a property for any sort of public use. We have that very small little parking lot in front. We're hoping, um, spring or summer, and actually, um, we're gonna name the property as far as the trail. You know, we'll give it a name, um, for the signup, just to kind of create a little bit of a landmark and get people excited about what we're doing. So, full is one trail, I guess. This year, even, hopefully, to get some access to the Eastern Trail. So, we're really excited about it.
I suggest Jason Neto as a name, 'cause we forget that one a lot. All set?
Yeah, no, I just, I'd like to echo his comments. I think you guys have done a fantastic job putting this together and, and vetting out the different options and the design proposals and keeping it to budget. The municipality, you know, building of what we need in this town, I think that it's a very reasonable budget to proceed with that. And, uh, you'd have, I hope you have major support here in town, and without any real hurdles of getting this thing passed.
Thank you. Mr. Dan?
I have a question to the general public that came here. How did you find out about this? And, uh, you know, is there suggestions on how we can get the word out to more people? So, I'll kind of look around. How did you find out about this?
Yeah, there's a mailer.
Okay.
Facebook, actually.
Okay, excellent, good, good. And you?
Yeah, mailer, and then you can do a meeting.
Yeah, good. Oh, yeah, you're Steve White. You, sir?
I got the mailer in the mail today.
Excellent, good.
Jim?
Just being a man about town. You know, with my wife being a journalism and being a resident, and, you know, just knowing people in town, Facebook, and just general town communication.
I mean, we certainly wanna get the word out as much as possible. We can have more of these meetings, and we'd like to see more people from the, from the town, you know, attend these. And you're a reporter, right?
Yeah, that's why I would help get the word out.
I like it.
It's J.A.S. Well, we've been here an hour and a half, uh, which is pushing a little bit longer than we thought we would be here. But hopefully, we've, uh, given you, uh, good information. And I for one appreciate the, uh, questions. I certainly appreciate the positive feedback. And I do think we're very lucky, or I'm very lucky, to have such a great group to work with. And, and thanks for this life, and for, um, giving us the opportunity to work with them. Thank you all for coming.